I'd like to call the study session to order. Joanna, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor Protan Carol Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer Turner, she's running a little late this evening, but she'll be here.
Okay.
Councilmember Mollehead.
Here.
Councilmember Wayne Dodge, with the accent. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Carico.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Winnick.
Here.
Thank you. The first thing on the agenda is, well, we're basically having departmental budget presentations, and the first is legislative.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I've asked Jason to narrate through the legislative with an administrative piece, and if you have questions after we get through our discussion or during our discussion, Debbie and Margot are also here to help out and support. So I'd like to ask Jason to start on.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for having me tonight. Jason Loveland, Director of Finance. I'll start off with the legislative budget, which is basically the city council, city attorney, and boards and commissions budget, all of which are paid significantly out of the general fund. There's a small amount paid out of the water and wastewater funds for the attorney. We're really here to highlight significant changes from the 2015 budget to the proposed 2016 budget. The legislative budget begins on page 37 of the proposed budget that we sent out on September There's only a couple of changes to highlight, and then some details if you'd like to go over those. The first change is in personnel, which increased $9,199. That reflects the adjustment in accordance with ordinance 1142 of 1995 for the increase in pay to council members. The other change to note, the city attorney fees, they have not gone up in the budget. We just allocated more dollars to the general fund due to the city attorney than from the water and wastewater fund. You'll know in Public Works, we have very specific needs for water, so we have specialized attorneys in that area. And so the city attorney expenses typically run out of the general fund. So after seeing a couple of years of trends, we've just adjusted those dollars back into the general fund from the water and wastewater fund to better identify where that firm's spending happens. Another couple of things, some of the largest expenditures for the legislative group from council are dues, and then grants, donations, and outside agency funding. The memo lists those individually. Of note, there were four dues, I guess that went up. CML, Adams County Economic Development, Dr. Cog and National League of Cities. Each of those increased from last year by about 2%. Other than that, the dues, grants and donations, and outside agency funding has remained the same. Additionally, the boards and commissions, those budgets have stayed the same from 2015 to what's proposed in 2016. And then with that, if there's any questions that you guys have, I can answer, or you guys can narrate amongst yourselves if you guys want to make any changes or additions after your budget.
Questions? Hearing then? Okay. Thank you. All right. Is this adjacent to your administration's next?
The City Manager's Department consists of three separate areas. One's the City Manager's Office, Public Communications and Economic Development. And all of these groups operate entirely within the general fund. This begins on page 44 of the proposed budget. You'll see personnel costs are estimated to increase nearly $45,000. Two items, the market adjustment and merit allowance, make up about $11,000 of that increase. Other elections by staff, and then a placeholder for a new city manager someday has been placed in that line item as well. The City Manager's budget did not change, well, the City Manager Division within the City Manager's Department, there were no increases to that budget. Everything remained the same from 2015. And the same is true for Economic Development. I think each maybe moved some dollars from different line items, from technical services to operating supplies, but there were no significant changes. And then there's a handful of requests through the package request process from the Communications Division, and I'll touch on those briefly. They're in your packet with details. The first is in the purchase services area, increase of $19,000 in order to restore the Eye on Northland show on Channel 8. Actually, that's $14,000 for that item. And then in total, the purchase services increase, so $14,000 for the Eye on Northland, and then $5,000 for live streaming and broadcast of council chambers, or council meetings. Non-capital equipment and supplies, an increase of $40,000 for a proposed new website in conjunction with the rebranding and marketing efforts. The thought there was there would be a need to update and refresh, build a new website. And then lastly, capital outweigh of $20,000. That's for new Channel 8 equipment in the Public Communications Group. Basically aging infrastructure for technology. I think the equipment is 15 to 20 years old. And I, as you know, technology changes rapidly, so almost anything over five years old in technology is nearly dated. So those are kind of the simplified version of the requests. I know that Margot is here. If there's more details that you didn't get from the request, and I can possibly answer some too, I'm not sure.
May I have a question? So on the equipment and the live streaming, I thought at the last study session, you left up that we were to get more information on how it was going to proceed and how other cities are doing the live streaming, and I haven't seen anything.
Margot, do you want to come up and talk about that? Please.
We talked about the equipment and the live streaming, and I think we were evaluating what others were doing in cost, so curious what's in this.
The, how we left it was that the sound in here wasn't sufficient enough to warrant investigating, streaming, or live broadcast. And so I haven't checked into other cities. I have, that's how we left it. And so I prepared a list of sound options for this room. I have not checked into other cities streaming in depth. I've talked to other cities, but it hasn't been in depth. I included it in the budget in case we wanted to move forward sometime during 2016.
Are the sound options included in the Channel 8 equipment budget?
No, they're separate. It's a separate function.
So how, I don't know if this is an adequate amount, I mean, one way or the other.
It's an adequate amount of money if sound isn't a part of it. I intend to do an RFP, and it is, it's a sufficient amount of money for the estimates that we received so far.
Well, we have to do something with the sound in here. I mean, it's terrible, and we have complaints all the time.
So I think all I could add on this one is that I think that this is important to do. I like doing it with our current contracted video buffer. That would be my preference, so.
The bid, the bid you see and the cost on there is from Olivier. Yeah, and it is represented on the memo that was prepared and presented to council, where we rent back part of, it's a rent-own kind of thing, very manageable for us to do.
I'm also a fan of the live streaming, but you're speaking of sound. How much is, how much is it going to cost to face the sound issues?
It depends what we do. There were several options, including putting baffling on the walls that looks, that you don't know is baffling, lapel microphones, lavaliers. There's something called touch to speak. There's several options. Some are not terribly expensive, and others are very expensive. These, what we've got now actually is functional. They might, I think they're cumbersome for people to use. That's why the sound isn't as good as we would like. You need to speak right into it, just like this, to be, to have maximum quality, and that just simply doesn't happen.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I have some comments on the restoring, the first package for restoring Eye on Northland on Channel 8. So while I think that it's, it's good to highlight the city, I think that that's a lot of money, or maybe limited viewing, that I'm thinking not that many people will view it. I don't know. Is it something that can also be streamed on the website?
Yeah, we can put it on the website. We can play it repeatedly on Channel 8. We can promote it. We can put it on our social media. It has a lot of functions, and it's appealing because it would give us a chance to showcase the projects that the city has right now, which are many. And they need to be, they need explaining. Wastewater, road construction, master campus plan, there's a lot of things that need explaining. Plus, it would give us a chance to showcase council and the mayor and employees. I mean, in my vision for it, is that the mayor and council would be the hosts, and I, of course, would help and arrange everything. But it would, it would give us a chance to explain a lot of things, and that's the appeal.
My concern is that 10 minutes seems long to me also. I'm just saying what I think.
It goes fast.
It goes fast. Chime in anytime.
We used to have Eye on Northland.
And it was well-received.
People liked it like that. And when we took it off, because we had budget constraints, it was a question, why did we do that? Because it did, it didn't just look at council, but we would have, like, the cancer, like the cancer walk, so Marge Carlowe was there talking about that. So, I mean, it really did highlight everyone, every project that was going on. 10 minutes goes by really quickly during that time, so.
I think it's a way of accomplishing what we've kind of wanted all along, which is to have some videos of Northland, whether you want to call it Eye on Northland or whatever. We have been asking for those types of events to be on. So, okay. All right, I'm good then.
Thank you.
I think it would be great to help explain some of the water, things that we need to do with the wastewater treatment plant, and have everybody understand what the sections are, and what they do, and why they cost so much. And just, just good information for people to understand.
And an increased understanding of city government at the same time, so.
And, of course, fun things too.
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome.
Anything else?
Yet, yes. So the city website. So explain this without having the branding finished at this point.
It's, it's a redesign of our current website. I got, I have estimates for a redesign and for a whole new website. And a redesign is really a much more practical solution. It would give greater navigation so that people could, and we could find things easier. We could put our social media on the homepage. It would, it would just give a fresh new look with easier to find and more thorough information on there, and be much easier to manage. There's a lot of workarounds now on our current website, and it would be much more straightforward and time efficient if we had a redesign.
But if, just, but if and when we did do anything with the logo or change it, then we would have to go in and.
I think, I think they'll time out at the same, they'll be about the same time, and we could make sure it was. We don't want to go back and touch it twice.
Yeah, and I wouldn't want to do that either. Okay.
Have we reached out to the students in Northland High School about maybe helping out with this project? I just think it might be a great opportunity to.
We haven't yet.
Give them some experience.
But that is a nice thought. They're probably very capable.
Yeah, they could stay. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So next, here's city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Joanna Small, the city clerk, and I am here to present the proposed 2016 budget for the city clerk's office. The clerk's budget begins on page 52 of the proposed budget document, and the city clerk's office focuses on the following service areas. We do legislative and administrative services, legal compliance, civic engagement, and customer service. The city clerk's department is funded and tracked through the general fund and is organized into just one division, which is the Administration and Operations. And for the 2016 highlights, the proposed 2016 expenditures are $338,531, which reflects an overall increase of $7,681, or 2% from 2015. We are planning on providing programs that will bring in some revenue that will be deposited into the general fund, and that would be from the passport services, licensing functions, and then also the certification of delinquent accounts. So on page 53, under the Personnel section, you will see the Budget Package Number 1 and Budget Package Number 2, and those amounts are $1,671 for personnel market adjustments, and then $2,791 for personnel merit allowances. So those are the increases to the clerk's budget. There are no significant changes proposed under the purchase services or supplies non-capital portions of the budget, but you will notice that funding has been reallocated among the line items, and that's to anticipate activity in 2016. There's no municipal election scheduled in 2016 as of right now. However, the city clerk's office will continue to serve as a drop-off site for Adams County for the general election next November, and then will also continue to promote voter registration. Funding has also been allocated for records management services, and that would include, some of the projects would hopefully be a records inventory assessment, and also the off-site records inventory and assessment there. We'd like to reduce the amount of budget that we use for the off-site storage and get that back in line. Also automated records retention, and then a vault reorganization. So that would include some equipment for storing the records in the vault. We also have funding in the Communications Services line item earmarked for some board and commission advertising and recruitment. We need to focus a little more on recruitment and letting folks know what boards and commissions we have, so we'll be using funding for that next year. And then the office will also continue to operate as a passport acceptance facility. The actual cost of providing that program is pretty minimal. It's about $3,500 worth of supplies and then staff time, which we don't have the staff time calculated. But the revenue that's generated, I believe, is a good return. Here to date this year, we've taken in about $63,000 worth of revenue for that program, so we'd like to go ahead and continue that, both for the revenue and also because it's a great service to provide to the community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just want to offer kudos, big time. I think you guys doing that is great, and like you said, it's a great thing for the community, and it's a great thing for the city, so big kudos on that. The second thing I wanted to address a little bit is, you brought up the boards and the boards that we have with the commissions. Have we thought about maybe as an incentive, you know, offering some, maybe a meal or something at these meetings, you know, putting that in the budget, just so that we can encourage people to come out? I don't know if that's a way, or, I mean, I know that some other boards, you know, they're right and stuff, they, they have that, and so I don't know if that's something to do to, at least something.
We could definitely look into that. Like you said, right now, it's kind of dependent on the different board, and the time that they meet, and sort of if they provided that historically. But we can definitely reach out to the different board clerks and see if that would entice some folks to spend an hour.
Yeah, yeah, that type of things, you know, to maybe get some more participation.
Absolutely. Some of the items that we're considering, of course, are having monthly articles in the connection, which there really isn't a cost for that, but also the utility bill inserts, special mailers that are just on their own. Postcard mailers are very easy to send out. Banners to let people know, I mean, we have a great opportunity, you know, with everybody who comes to City Hall to pay a water bill or to go to the building department. So banners, maybe, cardboard cutouts, you know, just different, unique things that we can place strategically to maybe try to spark some interest a little.
Congratulations on the massive return on the investment for the passports.
Thank you.
What a great return.
It's a great program.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think I would just ask if the amount that you've got in for training and registration for you guys is enough, because it would seem like you really need a lot of that, so I'm just wondering if it's sufficient, if you feel it's sufficient.
It has been. Luckily, you know, with the new marijuana legislation and having to get up to speed on that, luckily this state's been offering some training at no or minimal cost. So as of right now, that, the funding's been adequate.
Anything else?
Thank you, ma'am. Great, thank you.
Information Technology.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bob Lehrer from Information Technology. Information Technology is, we generally try and keep it split 75 to 80% out of general fund and the rest out of water wastewater. The highlights will be on page 72. Overall, we had a decrease of $91,000. We had fewer one-time expenses over last year. Last year, we upgraded Microsoft Office citywide, and we had a few extra, or a few additional servers that were due for replacement. The one line item group that went up was Personnel, $23,000, 919, and again, that's market adjustment, step allowance. Everything else decreased. We had one package request, and that's just for a server replacement. That'll be coming out of the water wastewater fund, and that's really it. If there's any questions, I understood if my budget went down, I didn't have to answer questions. I'm happy to.
So I'm going to ask you one. I was just going to say, because you had such a decrease in, you know, a decrease in supplies and capital equipment and so forth, do you think like in next year or the year after, you're going to have, you know, a decent increase then to replace servers and laptops and so forth, or computers?
Computers, we, they're on a four-year replacement cycle, and we try and balance it out so that stays fairly consistent. Servers is more difficult, and certain servers, we use server clusters, and some of our bigger clusters have to be replaced at the same time, so those years, and last year was one, are going to be typically higher. But really, what increased it the most last year was the Microsoft Office.
And licenses.
Yeah. That'll be a number of years.
Do you anticipate that maybe three years you'll have another upgrade, or in two years?
Most likely, yeah.
Most likely. I was just wanting to, for us, the people, that they'll see one later on, since you did such a good job, Teddy.
Yeah, yeah, most likely.
Anyone else have a question? Come in. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, Police Department.
There are two.
In uniform and everything.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Chief Jim May with Commander Ron Harrelson, commander over my admin division. He's here just in case my voice just disappears. Our budget begins on page 110. If you had switched over to page 111, you can see that we have, we're fully funded out of the general fund, except for those grants that we've received from the state. Also, we have 84 and a half FTEs. 66 of those are sworn officers. Down there in the budget packet, request, I'll pass the Personnel and the step allowances. The first one will be a training increase, which is for Adams County Police Officers Academy that we send them to. Over the last two years, we've seen a couple hundred dollars increases. However, last year, we were able to absorb it. This year, I'd like to put that in the budget, and it's about $800 per officer for seven slots a year. Adcom assessment increase has gone up 28,000. There's some technology changes that are occurring. Actually, you guys helped by passing that E911 authority, so we can go see if we can get more money that way through them, but that'll be next year. So this covers some of the cost for a new records management system, which is a county-wide system, and it's currently on its last leg, so we need to get that up and running. The animal shelter impound fee, as you can see, this increased actually quite a bit. Last year, when I became chief about, you know, four years ago, we were on a different pay schedule, was, you know, they just did an assessment, and I think we were paying, you know, close to $70,000, and then they went to a pay per animal. And when they went to that, we saw some opportunity where we could save some money, so that's when we developed that, you know, returned that animal home project at the end of the day, and we were able to save thousands of dollars. However, there's some things happening where the county said they can't, you know, provide that animal shelter at those costs, so that's why you see such a huge increase. So there's other things happening with the animal shelter. I'll have more news, I mean, with them next week, to see the direction where they're going. Hopefully, we don't see many more increases like this for our shelter.
So they're just increasing it for animal?
Correct. So if we take an animal out there, it costs us $160, so it doesn't matter what animal. So it's a cat, dog, it's the same, same price.
Should be based on the increase on what passed?
Yes, passed the, so that's why, you know, we've seen that increase, so.
Do you know how many animals you actually returned home last year? General?
I can't, you know, I, they told me, I think we saved like $30,000 of fees. So it was quite a few.
Wow, that's awesome. I didn't realize you guys were doing that.
Yeah, so we find them, and then we, people call in, and then we hold them and take them back to their owner.
234.
234?
Very good. See, I didn't bring it for a reason like that. The other one is Technical Services. This is for Brazos License and Maintenance Agreement, you know, maintain our new e-ticket riders. Now, I don't know if you've seen in the, in the news, but state legislation's looking at this, you know, trying to push it down on, on agencies to look at racial profiling and everything else for a better tracking system for a state level. I know in 2016, they're looking at six agencies to pilot the program. I have no idea how they're going to come up with those six agencies. We currently have four e-ticket riders, and we got kudos from Brazos, the company. We ended up getting the system up and running in nine months, and they said that's the fastest they've seen in the country. So, you know, kudos to my. So, you know, kudos to my staff for, for doing so well and putting that together 'cause they have to put everything into that little computer and tracks streets, um, all our ordinances, all violations. So, we did a fantastic job putting that in place. But, this is something down the road. I would like maybe next year, talk about some of the things that's coming from the state that we might have to be required to do at a, at a future study session too, so I can educate, educate you guys a little more on that. Uh, North Metro Drug Task, I'm sorry, I missed one. Then, the Communication Service on Smartphones. This is another thing that, um, we decided to go with every officer having, having a, a smartphone and for several reasons. We've learned with other equipment, when you assign one-piece equipment, you know, they take care of it better. And plus with the Adams County Courts and, um, how they notify officers of subpoenas and everything else, it's all through that. So, but with the smartphones too, we're finding is that they always have it with them. So, it replaced the camera, it replaced, you know, the audio recorder. It's amazing what, you know, some of those things that we don't have to, to buy anything and, uh, anymore because of actually, you know, the use of the smartphone. And that cost goes up, uh, twelve thousand dollars a year.
Every year, twelve thousand?
No, it's just twelve thousand, yeah, just for twelve thousand.
Well, it's an ongoing cost.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, it's gonna go up to that, I think it's thirty-four thousand.
Yeah.
Instead of, yeah, instead of, you know, twenty-two or whatever.
So, the twelve thousand, is that just for the equipment or does that include the monthly service fees?
That's the monthly service fees and everything. The equipment, I think we got really cheap, so. Uh, Professional Service Victim Service Unit, it, it only increased this year by nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Um, the, I'm sorry, North Metro, I, the problem is, I'm getting older and I didn't bring my cheaters, so that's the, uh, the, uh, let's see, North Metro Task Force Assessment Increase is, uh, hey, Joe, can I borrow your cheaters?
Eight, eight, eight thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-one. Yeah. Okay. And, uh, that, and so, that covers a lot of the technology over the years. Uh, North Metro hasn't replaced their technology like they, they should have, so, you know, on dire straits, so we decided as a board, that's something we're gonna add to our budget so we can get those replaced over the next couple of years.
The overtime budget increase, I'd like to add a bullet point, just says about court, you know, security. There is a switch and, uh, actually, uh, Gene brought it to our attention, um, was that, you know, working for the city is that, you know, we're doing ODP with the courts and that's off-duty employment. However, since it's another city function, we have to do overtime. So, with that, I didn't have a certain amount of money, so I had to take, um, a, you know, what sergeant, what an officer would make and come up with an amount. That amount's about twenty-five thousand dollars. The other five, which is the other bullet point, is that also includes the other city functions that, um, that we used it to ODP for and now we have to do overtime, such as, uh, the volleyball, you know, the, the Fourth of July, the, um, uh, the Pirate Fest. So, any other community events that requires an officer, we can't contract with the rec center, contract with the courts 'cause it's a violation. And so, that's why we have the overtime and that's why I put it in there.
Are you still having problems finding volunteers because of the difference in pay?
You know, I, I want, I am, but I think that, you know, right now, I, I took it back to my commanders and I was gonna say, hey, do I have to go back to council and say, we can't provide this? But, you know, we're, we're currently down with that, you know, eleven officers not working the street, so that's quite a bit. And it's, what is that, eighteen percent, I think? So, I think with that, as soon as we start, my commander said, hey, we're starting to have people roll in, um, at this time, they think they can make it happen, made some adjustments. The last thing I wanna see is where we're pulling officers off the street to mandate or make it mandatory for them to work the courts and then we're working short in the street. But, I'll keep you guys, you know, if I have any problems down the road, commander said they can do it. So, if not, you'll see them standing over here doing court security.
So, there's usually one or two officers?
There's, there's, there's one officer.
Okay.
What's, what's the price difference on average from the, from the off-duty compared to just your overtime, that the officer did?
The off-duty is forty-nine dollars an hour.
Okay.
Okay. And the overtime, depending where the officer was sitting. Officers, um, if you're a top-down officer, it's in the fifties. Um, if you're be, you know, a younger officer, starting out, I think it's in the high thirties. So, uh, but then the sergeants with their rates are, are much higher, so. So, I just tried to do it, an average, there's less of them, you know, percentage. So, that's how I came up with that twenty-five. And that's five per month, you know, for the twelve months. Uh, the radio replacement, huh?
Thank you, sir.
I did that already. Uh, radio replacement, um, in twenty-seventeen, Motorola's stopped, uh, they're gonna stop servicing quite a few of our radios, we're not gonna provide parts. That doesn't mean they're gonna stop working at that time, but at that time, once they go down, there's no fixing them. And with the technology and everything else and the government said that we have to, you know, be compliant in twenty-twenty-two of narrowbanding. So, there's a lot of technology going out there. Total cost, if we wanted to replace all the radios today, is between five-fifty and six-hundred thousand dollars. So, but the problem is, um, you know, I would've came to you and saying, hey, this is what, you know, we probably need to budget and that's a lot of money for radios. However, technology is going so fast and I hate, you know, saying bad things about the phone, but there's technologies out there where they might be able, you know, use phone and some of those functions. So, um, I think being on a replacement, we're replacing between five and ten radios a year will get us in line. So, if technology changes, we don't have a huge investment in what I call, you know, beta and VHS. So, I don't wanna be that beta, you know, purchaser. So, I think, you know, doing this, this way and replace them as, as we go and as we need them, I think it's a smart way to, to do it. So, that's why I'm asking, so every year, I'll, I'll, I'll keep purchasing between five and ten radios.
So, this fifty-five thousand represents between five and ten radios?
Yeah. Yeah, those radios for just the pack set, they're expensive. They're, they're like four grand, forty-five hundred dollars a radio.
Jim, you're pretty sure that these won't become outdated or obsolete, you know, by two thousand and twenty-two?
Well, the ones that you buy now can, um, that'll be narrowbanding. And the other thing that we do too is we provide a radio, um, when I first started, we had a bank of radios and they would last three to four years tops. They would be beat up. While during, you know, at one time, they said, you know what, everybody's gonna get a radio. And our radios are lasting ten-plus years. So, you know, by, by doing it that way and the radios that we're gonna, the technology in them will be narrow-banded, you know, compliant. So, they can be switched over when that happens, so. And then, the other, we have, um, one detective vehicle and then, uh, three patrol vehicles that will be, um, replaced next year too. And they rated pretty high on the replacement numbers. I think all of them were above eleven. Some were even a fourteen. The other thing too is getting, um, with that replacement of tasers, uh, over the years, you know, that's another thing. We used to buy a taser for the car and assign them to cars. Same thing happened, you know, so we decide, hey, we're just gonna, when officer comes in, we're gonna buy those. And now, we're at that replacement schedule about eight, you know, eight years. So, this gets us on another replacement schedule, so we don't have to buy a large amount of them all at once. And then, uh, the next one will be the LPR. That's a license plate reader, which is seventeen thousand dollars. Um, last year, we ended up getting a grant for twelve thousand dollars and, uh, through a state. And in the beginning, they were saying that, you know, we could use it for equipment and that's what we were gonna buy the license plate reader with and we ended up budgeting another five. Um, however, when we got the, you know, at the end of last year, that twelve thousand had to be used for personnel only. So, what we did, we helped supplement State Patrol and the Battle Group for, um, uh, auto theft, you know, doing overtime that way. So, this year, I'm asking for that, uh, license plate reader so we can really impact, um, our department complex. This is where we're seeing a lot of steals, um, hotels and that kinda thing. And then, the last one is, uh, fifty-eight hundred dollars, uh, for our sim munitions trailer. So, this is a training trailer. Uh, our current one is, is really small and it's hard to get all our equipment in, especially when we have, um, training up at the firehouse or, or out at, um, Flat Rock. And then, this last training thing we did, um, we're hoping to do that at least once a year. And what that does is inside there will be, the new one will be a bench and everything else, so we can make sure we store, um, all our gear and safety equipment inside that trailer. And that's it. And it looks like my increase this year was one percent for Police Department. I think that's pretty good. I'll just drop the mic and walk out.
Okay, questions? Any questions? Can you make a good job explaining?
Wow.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Take care of that.
Thanks, Ron.
All right, next, David is here. All right, Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor Council again. Uh, David Willett, Director of Public Works and Acting City Manager. Um, we do the Public Works Department Fund Summary, Budget Summary tonight. Um, Public Works and Utilities operates out of four funds, the General Fund, Water Wastewater Fund, Stormwater Fund, and the Sanitation Fund. We have fourteen divisions. Um, I have, uh, as I, as I do customarily, I've attached the organizational chart. We have three working groups. We've got Engineering, Operations, and Utilities, approximately seventy-one people. Um, this year, I've only asked for one budget package in the Operating Fund and that's for fifty thousand dollars additional for, um, biosolids removal up at the wastewater plant. As you, uh, know, every year, we spend or we have been spending about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to remove the biosolids, which is a byproduct of our waste stream, um, process. Uh, this year, I'm asking to increase that to fifty, fifty thousand to three-hundred thousand. Um, and, and the reason for that is, is we, we just wanna attack any, any potential for creating odors up there in the summertime more aggressively. And, um, I'm anticipating, uh, probably an accelerated schedule in the CIP for the wastewater plant from, uh, Colorado Department of Public Health. Uh, and in event we have to, we move towards total biosolids handling, the, uh, biosolids ponds would be totally decommissioned at that point. So, uh, this is not a wasted cause. It's, uh, it addresses, uh, the odors at this point that, that the plant does produce and eventually, uh, the, all of the biosolids will have to be removed when we decommission the ponds. Uh, so, that was the only operating expense that I've, uh, requested. And then, the typical, um, obviously, market adjustments and merit allowances. Um, other than that, um, I have twenty-four, uh, capital equipment requests. Um, there is, uh, sixty-four thousand dollars worth of requests from the General Fund, uh, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars in the water wastewater fund and six-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars in the sanitation fund. Um, there's, it's quite a lengthy list. Um, I, I try to plan all of the capital projects, uh, so they, year over year, um, I, I target continuity and, and expenditures in the funds, so I don't, uh, I don't have large anomalies in, in any of the funds that we operate out of. I wasn't planning on going over all twenty-four capital requests, uh, capital, pieces of capital equipment, though. I have Ray and Steve here, should you have particular questions. They've got some pretty strange names like Jockey Pump, Muffin Monster and things like that. So, um, most of these are utilities, um, um, and, and of course, sanitation, uh, the two big ticket items there are the trucks, uh, we're, are not on a five-year replacement cycle on those, on those vehicles and they're in the two-hundred-and-some-thousand range. So, that's the summary and, uh, it certainly, I know it's a big fund and there's a lot of things to talk about. If council has any particular questions, I'll try to answer them. Uh, I'll get, uh, Ray and Steve up here to, to cover me.
Can you?
Asking on these vehicle replacements, is that, that's just for the new vehicle? It doesn't, I assume you're getting money for the?
That, that, yeah, yeah. These budget packages do not, uh, do not reflect, um, salvage costs or, or the, the value we get. You know, one year, we, um, I, I think it was about six years, years ago, that the rearload trucks were in high demand and we actually got one of the trucks almost as much as what we paid for it after five years. So, uh, the, the trucks are, were, were pretty, we got two different versions we use and the, we don't really, uh, the crews are, are well adapted to both vehicles, so there's not much training expense involved in those.
So, depending upon the condition of the trucks, is prices to be a little bit lower actually when you think of the over-under?
Right, that's exactly right.
Okay, any other questions? Carol, did you hear?
I do have one. Um, this is on the infrared paving unit. So, I think my question would be, when it's thirty-nine thousand to buy that equipment and then you have people running it, how does it compare? Because I don't know what you pay, when you pay a yearly subcontractor or contractor to come out and do that work instead of us doing it in-house.
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I look at, uh, potential outsourcing and contracting and, you know, I, I, I often preach to the, to our, my operations manager to find a balance for that. You know, I, I don't, I, I think it's a great service and for those of you who don't know what an infrared machine is, it's basically a, it helps seal, uh, a new pavement. Uh, it's very hot, it reflects off, um, you know, it's run, our machine is run by propane, heats up metal and then in turn heats up the, the asphalt, so it, it gets a better bond. Um, Carol's question about outsourcing, we do have contractors that also put, do crack sealing for us, pavement patching and all of those kinda things. And, um, I, I, I wouldn't wanna say our in-house crews are, are as, as efficient, but they do a darn good job. And I would say, um, it would be, it wouldn't, that would be a service that I would not get rid of. So, I don't know if that helps.
So, you're saying you still have the contractor plus buying the equipment and having our guys do the work? Or am I not?
We, we, yeah, we do a combination of in-house work on the streets and we, we have a, we also, outsource, so we have both, 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 both vehicles.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Uh, just a quick question.
Yes.
On the arrow board, uh, it says that the unit's rated with a six, which is fair. So, what's the reason for replacing the arrow board? Is it just gonna be added to the fleet in that? That's?
I would say it's probably technology, but Steve, maybe you can come up, please?
Yeah, that's.
Come on, come on, come on up front, please.
It's not actually a replacement. That's my fault, I got it in there. We have one right now, it's essentially just an arrow directional notification. This one will be in addition to it, so it's really a, a new buy. And this one will give us the flexibility to set up, um, messages, have a lot more information than just a flashing arrow. So, we're gonna use it with.
So, it's not necessarily a replacement, it's just adding to?
It is an add, so that disregard the rating of the current one. That's actually in pretty good shape, so we'll have a few that we can draw from going forward.
Any other questions? Comments?
And I don't, I don't know anything about any of this stuff, so I'm just flying by the seat of my pants here. Grappling hook collection truck, a hundred-and-fifty thousand. So, is that something, since it's a new buy, um, it's something that you use every day, daily?
We use it every day and Steve can preach upon this, but we have, uh, a, a very good, uh, sanitation crew and we go around with special pickups. We try to load huge couches, beds, bureaus into rollers. Uh, I am really just, I'm, I'm saddened to watch, you know, our crews go out there and do that, 'cause I know that I couldn't do it. And this is a grappling hook that hopefully reduces work injuries. It gets the, the product picked up more efficiently and put into a truck, so we don't physically have to have two or three guys lift up these huge pieces of furniture, try to get them into a truck. So, that, it's kind of a hoist and, and put it into a bin, so we get that, uh, to the, to the, to the recycle or, or to the, um, solid waste disposal.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. What, our crews now go around and rearload, um, one of our older garbage trucks and it'll take typically one driver and, um, an assistant to load up some of the larger furniture. Um, this'll allow a single driver to go out, um, by himself and use an automated arm of the grappling hook to pick up something as large as a refrigerator or a couch, you know, dump it into the, the bed of the truck and then bring it back, dump it out and transfer it that way. So, for, um, for safety purposes, some of the stuff that our crews are lifting is probably, I'd have some concerns about that going forward. Once we have a tool like this, then I think it's worth looking at and saying maybe a few times a week is when we pick up those large items and then use, you know, in conjunction with the, the smaller items for the, the way we do it now.
Okay.
And for the truck that picks up the dumpsters, do we only have one of those or do we have multiple trucks?
We have two. This would be a replacement of the old.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just the dumpster trucks for council's reference, I think we have, I don't know, like 18, 30 yarders and.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have, I mean, they go out, sometimes a yard has none of them in here, so they're, they're used quite frequently.
I have a question. What is a muffin monster?
It's, it's a, it's a mechanical contraption and a lift station that basically grinds up solid materials within a lift station, so it doesn't, hopefully doesn't clog the pumps and motors and valves and stuff that pushes the waste stream down the, down the system.
So now someone can go for Halloween as a muffin monster.
There you go.
I'll get you answered with a straight face.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, is that it?
Yes, that's it for staff presentations.
All right then. I, we are, the study session is adjourned and we are going into executive session. I'm moving to go into executive session, personnel section. 4.5 Karen A. of the City of Northland Home Real Charter for Personnel Matters Regarding Council Appointee Devaluations. Is this the second? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in executive session.